Good evening and welcome to the March 21st, 2017 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. And tonight's meeting was, we're going to start off with a public hearing on our proposed fiscal year 2018 school budget. And in order to do that, to begin the public hearing, what we need to do is open with a roll call vote to do that. So if everyone would state their name and their vote. Deborah Lucia.
Peter Gunn.
Marissa Carrari.
Sarah Hunter.
Mayor Karen Thatcher.
Casey Corcello.
Cynthia Kozinski.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce our superintendent Nancy Follinsby and our business manager Dale Doran. And they are going to present to us the proposed fiscal year 2018 school budget.
Thank you, Deb. I'll begin and then do the first part of the budget and Dale Doran will do the last sections of the budget. So for those of you who are watching this video, if you want to have a copy of the budget in front of you, you just need to go to the, our school department website, And click on District. You'll see that as a tab at the top of the page. And then you click on Budget, once you've clicked on that first tab. And then you open the link for FY 2018 Proposed Budget and you'll have that document in front of you. So the first part of the budget is the foundation. And our first tab is the Mission Statement and Core Values. So the first part of the budget is the Mission Statement and Core Values. And these values and Mission Statement are the guide that we use as we do the work we do to get the, to develop our budget for these Hampton Public Schools. Some of the important statements in the Mission Statement are that we are going to provide an excellent education for all students, that we want each student to be able to demonstrate lifelong learning skills, that we will teach each student at the student's point of need, and that we'll work together to produce a learning environment that meets each student's needs. And our core values are respect, equality, achievement, community, honor, and diversity. The next document is our strategic plan. It was a three-year improvement plan from 2014 to 2017. This year, this spring and into the summer, we'll be working on developing a new strategic plan. But this document is the document that also is a guide for the work we do to provide a strong educational program and to improve student performance. And we have used this in the last three years, reported out on the improvements that we've made during those last three years, and we continue to look back at it to guide our process. Next document is an enrollment, a document getting enrollment data for the East Hampton Public Schools. As you can see, overall enrollment has been increasing in the last three years. It might be noted here that our enrollment is increasing at the same time that enrollment in Western Massachusetts districts are decreasing in many of our Western Massachusetts districts. We're especially pleased about the increases in students in our preschool programs, which have been increasing steadily over the last three years. This year, we had to open a new classroom for our preschool students. And we are trying to get out the word that we welcome our students in our community to enter our preschools. If there are any questions on any of that, let me know along the way or as we go back. The next document is about charter schools, school choice, and vocational tuitions. So the chart at the top of the page shows a history of the funds that leave the district through the choice and charter programs and the funds that come to the district as a result of students using the choice program to leave their community schools to attend schools in our district. As you can see from the chart, there's been a downward trend in the number of students who choice out to other districts and a trend upward in students who choice into our district. That seems to correlate with the opening of our new high school. You'll also notice that the number of students who leave our district to attend charter schools has increased with a substantial increase since Hilltown Charter moved to East Hampton. And along with those increases and decreases, there are increases and decreases in funds that come to the city and/or leave our city and to our, and to our school department. The bottom part of that chart is about vocational student tuition data. We send students to Smith Vocational, which is a full-year program, and to Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, Career Tech, their vocational program, Career Tech. That program is a half-day program. Smith's program is a full-day program. So students leave our district and really attend Smith Vocational. But for Career Tech, our students attend our high school for half of the day for academics and then Career Tech for the other half day. We like this model very much because we get to keep our students in our schools, they participate in our athletic programs, and then also get their educational, or vocational rather, experience. And you can see that the numbers are pretty stable for Career Tech and have been decreasing for Smith Vocational. That is probably in part due to the change in regulations where the state said that students could attend their vocational school of primary affiliate for the exploratory program. In the past, they also attended at Smith. So I think when they're attending the exploratory program at Career Tech, they're finding a vocational program at Career Tech that they, that meets their needs. And so more of our students are going there and less ending up going to Smith right now. If a student is pursuing a program in agriculture or natural resources, then they are allowed to do their exploratory at Smith and of course participate in that program at Smith.
Do you want us to ask at the end or ask as we're going through?
Either. Whatever you prefer.
I was just curious if you could comment on the increase in the cost for CTEC. I think you've mentioned that before, but I don't know that everybody here has heard it. And I would benefit from being reminded, the number of students, for example, at CTEC from fiscal year 2013 to 2017 changes by roughly 10%, but the total cost goes up by over 50% in that stretch.
Dale, I don't have the tuition for CTEC. Do you have that off the top of your head?
This year?
Yeah.
This year, it's just around $10,000.
It's stayed relatively stable. But what you're also not seeing here, or what's not indicated here, are special education costs. So there's an increment that's added to the vocational tuition for special education. And that may be- At Smith. At Smith, yeah.
Right, I just think that would be important because someone who just pulls up this page and just looks at those numbers, that's a, some delineation of how 50 students cost $395,000 and 54 students cost $600,000 five years later. Because it's, am I reading that correctly? That that's the-
Where are you looking?
Under the cost for CTEC, the student FTEs in fiscal year 2013.
Right, right, right.
It goes from 51 to 54 and it goes from $395,000 to $600,000. I mean, there's a growth in the cost at Smith.
And there's a growth in the cost at CTEC as well, from 2013 to 2017. The state, if I'm correct, sets a limit on tuition costs. And so they-
For vocational education.
For vocational, so they can, they can charge the full amount that the state allows or they can choose to charge less. And Smith's vocational tuition has been increasing each year. It's, I think, is it 17,500 this year?
Smith?
Yeah.
It's 17 even.
17 even, and it appears that it's going to-
And then there's a differential for every special education student in addition-
Right.
At about $4,000.
I guess I would just ask if we could, if we could see more about that. And I can go back and research. I should have asked in advance because it's a very specific question. I apologize for not sharing that question. But I was just, I recall and I can't, I could not find quickly the explanation for the jump. Most of the jump is in fiscal year 2015, right? That's where we see the biggest jump, I think, in terms of, under CTEC.
So your question is some kind of comparison between what the per pupil rate was in 2013 as to what it is in 2017?
Right.
Yeah.
Because the number-
I understand the question.
Perfect.
And I don't know the answer because it predates my employment in the district, but I certainly, that's something I can take a look at for sure.
And I don't have that.
Right, because it is, but it is our, it is our preferred wish that we want more students to be going to CTEC than to Smith.
It's an advantage to us cost-wise because Smith's tuition is around 17,000 and CTEC tuition is around 10,000.
Right, I see that we can educate 20 more kids at CTEC than at Smith for the same amount. That, that part's apparent. What isn't, what isn't as evident is why the CTEC price per student went up so dramatically. So, thank you. And yeah, if we can, if we can just document, I think that would be important.
And I think it's also important to notice the decrease in enrollment in these two programs. And I think we spoke about, due to what the high school is offering. And with the new school, the programs that we can offer now.
And that's a trend that we anticipate will continue in fiscal year 18 as well. We believe the numbers of students seeking vocational education in fiscal year 18 will be a decrease over fiscal year 17, as 17 was over 16. And I do, I do think it's attributable to some of the offerings that the high school has been able to put in place.
Particularly, we put a program back into the fabrication labs this year. And so that's something that has been desired.
Designed technologies.
Yes, correct. Any other questions on that? Okay, so on the next page is a summary of East Hampton Public Schools' recent budget trends. And so it's important to note that when the proposed budget, the 2016-2017 budget was approved, it was the first time since 2008 that a proposed budget was approved for the schools. And a corner was turned. That was a very good experience for all of us last year. Thanks to Mayor Thatcher and her support and collaboration with us in, in working on that budget. The positions requested in last year's budget were required as a result of the growing enrollment in our schools, and the same can be said for the requests made this year. The proposed budget is an essential, this year is again, an essential services budget, and the requested positions are those prioritized by the leadership team as essential to providing the services and learning opportunities that support academic success for all students. The proposed essential services budget, including these positions, will build upon a wide array of programs and services already in place and will enhance learning opportunities for every student. And if we turn to the next page and the slide chart, see how the budget is broken out into the categories we report to the state. As you can see, the largest percentage of the budget is for instructional services, the teachers who educate our children. Other categories are administration, which I think is self-explanatory, the administrative positions in our district. Other services are nurses and athletics, co-curricular clubs and activities. Transportation, of course, is what we spend on transporting our students. Four is operations and maintenance of our facilities. And the next is the fixed charges. These are charges such as insurance, rental, leases of equipment. And the last is tuition to other districts, and that's our tuitions out to vocational and out-of-district special education tuitions. Any questions on that?
Dale, do you think that in the coming weeks, we could see how our, what seems to me to be a really low and highly effective administration cost relative to instructional service cost rates, about 9%? I would, I bet that that's one of the lowest in the valley. Do other schools break down their budgets in a way where we could see it as clearly as we see ours?
I don't know that we can see it this way, but the Department of Defense for the entire Commonwealth does administration cost as a function of per pupil cost-
Right.
-in a comparative way to every district.
Am I right that we're relatively low in that?
I haven't looked at it, but I'd be happy to look at it at all of our neighboring districts-
Yeah.
-and see what the comparison looks like.
I think, given what we're about to take on as tasks at the school committee and for the, for the city with its educational expenditures, it would be helpful for the citizens to see how efficiently we run the East Hampton Public School relative to other districts and also relative to the numbers across the Commonwealth. I think the last time we looked at that, that was true. And I just, as I say, I just did the quick sketch of the, of the number again, but it strikes me that I think less than 10% is really admirable, and I'd love to see that explained or emphasized more in that context. Thank you.
Certainly can take a look at that.
And we would probably do it with districts that were comparable in size to our district. So now, I've asked Dale to begin with the next chart and talk to you about the choice revenues, and then she'll go on to explain the rest of the budget pieces for you. You can answer other questions at the end.
So this next chart addresses what we term district-generated revenue. So in addition to the money that we get to this, from the state and the money that the city, the funds that the city devote to the school operating budget, the district uses district-generated revenue to offset the operating budget every year. And this is a five-year look at four categories of district-generated revenue, one being school choice, those are the students who elect to attend East Hampton Schools that live in other Massachusetts communities under the mass school choice program. Circuit Breaker is a program offered by the state that, that directs revenue around your special ed expenditures in the district. What they do every year, it's a very sort of complicated formula and it, it moves from year to year. But they establish a threshold for what can be spent on every special ed student. Let's say, this year it's somewhere in the 40s. And then if you spend any money in excess of that, you can apply to the state to be reimbursed at a percentage of that cost for any of the dollars over the threshold. So for students who have very intense services in district or are educated out of district, many of those expenditures can be put together to put a claim in for the Circuit Breaker funds every year.
Was that also the Medicaid reimbursements for like the therapeutic services?
That's another category that actually doesn't show up here because Medicaid, we do apply for those funds every year and, but those go by state statute to the city and not to the school district.
Okay. I'm sorry, I think you said this thing, is that state reimbursement or federal?
Which one?
The circuit breaker.
Circuit Breaker is state-
Okay.
-and Medicaid reimbursement is federal.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I, sorry, to slow us down, but I would continue to urge members of the committee to talk with our representatives whenever we can about the equity involved in the way the Circuit Breaker, because again, and Dale has pointed out, it's a percentage over a threshold. It seems to me, and I've made this argument before, that the special education needs of students in the Commonwealth should be paid for by the Commonwealth as a whole, independent of where they live. I just think, and my concern about that is heightened all the more in an environment of increased enrollment in charter schools. Because as we know, local charter schools educate a smaller percentage of students with special needs. So it's like a double whammy, depending on how the demographics and geographics work out. And one of the ways you could resolve it is to just make it a statewide, fully-covered expenditure, rather than having the budgets in certain municipalities get hit so adversely. And I think in general, all public school budgets getting hit because the charter schools do not enroll as, as high a percentage of students, and they don't enroll as high a percentage of students who exceed the cap. There's very, you know, there's very few special needs students who exceed the $40,000 level being educated in charter schools. So it's a, you know, there's two, two pieces to it. But I think it's important that we continue to talk with our representatives and senators about addressing this, this partially funded, in my view, inequitably funded state mandate.
So other revolving accounts are things, fees that the district charges for things like transportation, and the other is early, early ed tuition. All of our preschool programs are peer-partner programs. We're obligated to serve children who are identified in need of services at age three. But all of our programs have peer partners that are educated in those classrooms alongside of the children in need of special services on a tuition basis. So that's that category of things. And then finally, federal and state grants. The East Hampton Public Schools are aggressive in applying for any grant funds for which were qualified. And I think does a really good job at getting a good number of those grants, and they're in that final box. I thought I'd mention, comment on two of them in terms of the trend that's represented.
Yeah.
School choice. You'll see for both, well, for both school choice and Circuit Breaker, that fiscal year 16, relatively little funds were utilized. That's because after many years of budget difficulties, all of the reserves had been used up essentially. And I came here right at the end of fiscal year 16, and at that point in time, there was next to nothing in the reserve accounts over a period of eight or nine years, as Nancy mentioned. They had been used up, simply used up. So for the past couple of years, we've worked with an eye towards re-establishing some of those reserve accounts. At the end of fiscal year 16, it was around, it was a little over a half million dollars, I think I mentioned that to you at one of your early meetings this year. And the reason that you want to do that, I think, is twofold. One is that it allows you the flexibility to use more than what you collect in a year, in a year that you need to. You'll see that next year, we're going to use a little bit more than we did this year. We wouldn't be able to do that if we didn't have reserves. So it allows you to try to even out the amount of your budget growth. So you're not just shifting that to the town side when, when you need a year, that you might need to add more things. So that's one reason to do it. The other reason to do it, which in my opinion might even be more important, is that we're obligated to give a lot of services to students by state law. We budget for what we think we know is coming down the pike, but things happen. And the area that, that is more often going to happen is special education, because special education services are very expensive. You might have a year that you budgeted for everybody thinking you're going to have, and two more students move into the district that have expensive out-of-district placements that aren't budgeted for. You need someplace where you have a little cushion that you can address the volatility that can come about by situations like that. So I think the good news is the district is in much better position than it was, and we're going to try to continue to grow those reserve accounts to allow us to do those two things in the future. The other place I wanted to comment on is the grant. And you'll see sort of a big falloff of grants from fiscal year 14. Fiscal year 14 was the last year of the federal stimulus money, the AHRAs money. So that was a year, there were two or three years that stimulus money really bumped those numbers up for all school districts in Massachusetts. And those funds are no longer available. Those programs are over.
I'm sorry, I'm not totally understanding. So for example, in fiscal year 16, the school choice revenue generated is only at $124,000. Does that mean that there was actually more money that came in that we spent it that year?
This doesn't represent what was generated. It represents what was applied in that year-
What was applied, okay.
-from those accounts. And the reason in fiscal year that only $124,000 could be was because it had all had been used in previous years.
Oh, okay, so it had been borrowed and I think money, okay.
Yeah, we, in prior years, had used money essentially in anticipation of-
Okay.
-to close what otherwise would have been a larger gap.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the grant, the revenue?
Yeah.
So right behind that, you'll see brief descriptions of the grant programs that the district has in place that we're totaling almost $872,000.
Dale, before we actually move on, I just have one question. With regard to Circuit Breaker, did everyone come away, does everyone understand like that it's never fully funded?
Mm-hmm.
And that we never get what we're supposed to get?
Right, right.
And it doesn't work the way it's supposed to? Okay, I just want to make sure everyone understands.
Yeah, in my time in public education, which is the last 24 years, it's gone from about 52%-
Funded?
Yeah, 52% of, over the threshold-
Right.
-the dollars over the threshold, to in the 80s. That's been the range.
But even then, whatever, it's, so that's what's actually happened?
Right.
Not what's supposed to happen?
That's what's actually happened.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, and then again, that's half of what I was describing before, is that double whammy. First of all, it's underfunded. Second of all, it's inequitable because the population that's affected by that is disproportionately educated in traditional public schools.
Right, right. I have a question. I've always wondered about this. So if somebody like choices into a district, like if they chose into our district, and then in their time here, it was determined that they had significant needs and they required more services, would that, is that, does the sending district, are they on the hook for that? Or are we?
They're on the hook for, are they responsible for a certain amount per whatever special education service the child has.
Right.
And that's a good question. I guess-
If it was an out-of-district placement-
Right.
-from the home community would be responsible for-
But if it's a school choice?
Choice in.
Their home, their whole community would be-
Their home district is still on the choice.
But if they needed more services than they needed when they first came in-
Here.
Here.
Then that becomes part of the choice dollars that follow the child here.
Follow the child, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the sending district does pay?
Yeah.
Even if the expenses are incurred after they've been here for X amount of time?
Right, right.
The sending district always covers those additional special ed increments?
Other than out-of-district.
Okay, thank you. It seems like I've always been confused about it.
Good question.
So if you turn the page, this is a section that actually presents the budget. I wanted to say that we followed the same process that we used last year, which meant we started this process in district in late fall. And then there were a series of meetings with the finance subcommittee in January and February. And it resulted in the document that you have before you tonight. One of the things I think was very helpful was last year, we developed a number of sort of principles that we wanted to adhere to when considering building a budget. And we had those, we didn't have to do that this year. We had them, we thought they were good and used them again. Some considerations that are important to keep in mind is that some of the assumptions that we made in building this budget will change. that we made in building this budget will change before school starts in September. And, you know, there are enrollment fluctuations and that, as I mentioned, is volatile. State requirements sometimes change as well. So we've done our best attempt at what we expect, but there'll be changes. So we're always sort of walking this line of being as fiscally responsible and conservative as we can, but having enough flexibility to deal with those things you don't know are going to happen, and they always happen.
Right.
And then the other thing that we don't know yet at this point in time is what the state funding looks like or what grant funding looks like. And those are big parts of this picture that we don't know yet. So as the superintendent mentioned, this is an essential service budget. And what that means, just as a reminder, is it includes all personnel programs and services we think are necessary to serve the children we know now will be enrolled next fall. And we, in some cases, have reduced lines, the amount of the budget for the lines, based on our history in spending in those lines over the last couple of years. In others, we've raised them, and others you'll see they stayed the same. The other big variable, I guess you can call it, this year is we had to make some assumptions about what we would be paying 90% of the people who work in the school district, because it's a negotiation year. And when you consider that 80 to 85% of a school budget is salaries, it's a pretty big assumption. And there, I talked about the tension between fiscal responsibility and flexibility. I think the tension around negotiations is being as conservative as you can, but flexible enough to negotiate in good faith, which by law, you're obligated to do. So that's the balance we try to strike there. So the proposed fiscal year 18 budget is increased overall by 2.5%. And it adds five additional FTEs over the fiscal year 17 budget. And I just wanted to speak briefly about each of those positions and why they were thought essential. I also wanted to say that there were more things that were on the table, and we narrowed it down to what we believed was truly essential. And that happened through conversations among the leadership team, coming to some shared understanding about what the priorities were, looking back to the strategic plan and our principles of budgeting. So the positions that get added are a third grade teacher at Center Peppin. The rising second graders, had a teacher not been added, would have resulted in class sizes of 27 or 28 pupils.
That's too much.
Without whatever the influx will bring us in terms of additional enrollment by next year. And at the early elementary grades, our experience has been, those have been rising in the summer. So it was clear to us that particularly in the primary elementary grades, those kinds of class sizes are not optimal for learning, maximal learning. It adds a sixth grade teacher at Whitebrook Middle School, same story, the rising fifth grade. If a teacher wasn't added, it would result in class sizes of 27 or 26, which would, you have to look at numbers, but you have to also look at group composition. And when we took a good look at the learning needs of that group of students, we didn't feel good about having class sizes that big, given the number of students who have special learning needs.
Right, right.
Yep.
And I also want to add that we also looked at the possibility of shifting a teacher from different grade levels, so could we cover the extra numbers by shifting, but we didn't have a place to do that.
Right, right. Glad you said that, because we spent a lot of time trying to figure out whether we could do that. They'll be at 24, 23, 24, yeah. It also adds a custodian at Whitebrook. A good number of years ago, custodians were cut at Whitebrook, I believe it was a custodian and a half. It has, they are, when you look at any kind of standards for numbers of square feet that a person should be responsible for maintaining, they are way out of whack in comparison with the other buildings in the district. Whitebrook, because it's aging, is a difficult building to clean, the way that it's laid out, makes it harder still because it's all open concept and all on one floor. Since I've come aboard, this is a need that was identified. And when our new director of maintenance came on in the fall, he quickly came to the same conclusion. So that's that. It adds an English teacher at the high school. Class sizes at the high school have been growing, particularly in the English classes. It also has had an impact of constricting, the way high school schedules go, constricting schedules, the schedule in terms of making, being able to even class sizes among the electives. So the high school, in addition to early education, are the two places where enrollment really has been markedly growing. And I think this has been a need for a while, and it sort of has come to the top of the list at this point. And it adds a paraprofessional at East Hampton High School. Originally, they requested a teacher and a half, the other half teacher being a phys ed teacher. Phys ed classes right now, some of them are as big as 35, 36, 37 kids in a class. We thought a better way to address this need, and a more cost effective way to address this need, was to hire a paraprofessional and assign it to the phys ed department, so that you would have the benefit of the supervision of two adults in some of those bigger phys ed classes. And this was really a need that came down to sort of safety concerns. And we felt that this was a more cost effective, but equally effective way to address those safety concerns.
And we have been trying to patch together some assistance for the phys ed teacher at the high school, so he wasn't there with 36, 7 kids. Either there have been ongoing student teachers, or the athletic director has also helped out with some of those larger class sizes. But we determined that we needed a more permanent solution.
Any questions about sort of those preliminary comments? So then if you turn to the next page.
Sorry, I'm going to slow this down just for a second, because I just wanted to highlight one larger piece. If I'm, if, again, if the calculations are correct here, and again, I think this speaks to the efficiency of the operations, and I know that this is just an estimate, but we have a student population growth of 2.1% and an increase in the budget of 2.5%. It seems to me that, given the increasing costs of providing educational services to be that close, again, speaks to the relatively effective and efficient use of resources in the district.
And also noting that this year is the contracts negotiation, so there's going to be an increase as well in that, too.
Right, and I think part of that, part of that's in there, but I just think as a baseline, and again, maybe I'm speaking to a citizen concern that isn't out there, but given the discussion and the great presentation that we had last week about the prospect of building another wonderful school building, and we've seen the positive effective numbers here from the last investment in fiscal capital, and really in human capital we made, I think this again is testimony to the fact that the district runs really efficiently. So, sorry, I keep slowing you down, Dale, I'll stop, I promise.
That's okay, I think it was a really important point tonight.
Yes, and we are very thankful for the work that Dale does with our leadership team to make it run as efficiently as it does.
So the summary page takes each of the budget locations and gives you a comparison between, there's a printing error on that page, it should say fiscal year 17 rather than 16. Yeah, so if you make that change. Fiscal year 18 to 17, the proposed dollar increase and the percentage increase in each of those locations, and then the grand total down below. Probably noticed that where staffing is being added, the percentage is a little bit higher. The other point that I would make is because Center Peppin and the Maple Schools budgets are relatively lower than any of the other budgets, any increase translates to a higher percentage for them. And I wasn't going to walk you through each location budget, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that anyone might have in regards to them.
Probably also worth mentioning that the finance subcommittee met several times with Dale and Superintendent Volzvieh and went through every item line by line and asked questions and made sure we had a good understanding of, Dale fully explained every difference in where she expects us to end this year and next year's budget. Any questions or comments?
I just think it's important to note that, you know, just the, how healthy, I'm just saying here in quotes, but, you know, we're in, it's definitely a growth, another growth year. And, you know, it has to do with a lot of really great things that are happening in our schools, and people wanting to stay here, and even families moving into East Hampton. So it's really good news, you know, and that we're, we're doing a lot with not a huge amount of increase. So making the investment in personnel, such as Dale and even the custodial, the maintenance man, or the building manager as well, like, and the techno, uh, Ashley. Making those investments is really important for the growth and for the future of the schools. So thank you guys for your, your hard work doing before.
We do have a good team working on the operations of our, our district here.
Any other questions or comments? Well, at this time, we would normally invite the public to ask questions or make any comments as well, but it doesn't appear as though anyone is here to do that. So if, if we are feeling as though we are ready to approve and endorse this budget, then we need to have a motion, and the motion should be stated something like to approve and endorse the submission of the mayor, submission to the mayor and city council on the proposed fiscal year 18 budget as presented in the amount of...
So moved. In the amount of, sorry, I just, I just clicked away from it. Hang on, that, uh, sorry, I only have the dollar amount right there.
16, 929, 214.
Yes. So I moved that we submit the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget to the mayor and city council in the amount of, and I just want to ask the page. Sixteen million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars.
There's a motion that's been seconded to approve and endorse the submission to the mayor and city council, the proposed fiscal year 18 budget as presented in the amount of sixteen million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Very pleased. Okay, at this time, we need a vote to close the public hearing and move into regular session. So if someone would make that motion.
The school committee moved, closed the public hearing on the budget and moved into its regularly scheduled session.
Second. Motion has been made, it's been seconded, all those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, now for the regular session of our March 21st, 2017 meeting. We will start off with thanking East Hampton Media for taping tonight's meeting for us. Anyone would be interested in helping to tape city government meetings, they're looking for volunteers, and you should contact Kathy Lynch at 413-203-1360. And Superintendent Volzvieh has some announcements for us.
Yes, I do. The next regular snow committee meetings are April 11th and 25th, May 9th and 23rd, June 13th and 27th, 2017. There are half days of school on Thursday and Friday, March 16th and 17th, due to parent teacher, that was already happened. We did have this from our snow day. April, let's see, there's no school Friday, April 14th, due to Good Friday. There is no school April 17th through April 21st, due to Patriots Day and spring break. There's a half day of school on Friday, May 5th, due to teacher professional development. There is no school on Monday, May 29th, due to Memorial Day. And currently, the last day of school is scheduled for Monday, June 26th, which is a half day of school for students. And we have to be pretty confident that that is going to be our last day of school.
Hopefully. It is March, really good.
Yes, maybe I shouldn't have said that.
Can't go beyond the lightness.
And the practical reality of attendance on that day, too, a half day on a Monday.
Yes, exactly.
When so many summer jobs start the weekend before that.
Yeah.
It's a case of where we're going to, we're going to check a box, in theory, more than we will actually, in practical, educational services being offered that day. So it's, it's one of the ways where there's a mandate that you'd like to think that the state could say, under certain weather conditions, why put everybody through this dog and pony show just to check a box?
I bet you get a lot of students.
Peter Gumpers.
We certainly.
It's crazy, you know, anyway.
We were certainly hoping that Friday was going to be our last day, however.
Do you have other announcements?
No. Those are not very many.
Okay, gotcha.
We have, as far as I can, I'm sorry, as far as I can tell, that we have no correspondence and unfortunately, no gifts.
Okay. So then we will move on to our subcommittee reports. Cynthia, do you have anything to say for the finance subcommittee?
Well, we just went through the budget. We did meet over three different meeting times to really go through all the changes to the budget. Dale did a really awesome job of explaining to us the increases, the reason why we had certain increases and the decreases. And, you know, I just think this is a really sensible budget and a very nice process. It's really easy to understand and look at, and she does a really nice job of bringing it all together for us.
Nice grades lately.
Thank you.
Very well done, see, very easy.
Yeah, we'll be to have our...
Okay, moving on, policy subcommittee.
We have not met since our last meeting, but we will be scheduling a meeting to discuss a few things. But for today, we do have two second readings.
Okay.
So shall I just read those at this point?
Sure.
Okay, I have one before you read it. Before you read it, I should say, regarding the entrance age policy. When I was rereading this prior to this meeting, there was something, oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, entrance age policy, that's the one you were going to read first, right? Yes, it was something that bothered me, and I just have decided to bring it up, even though we'd already had one reading of it, to share this with you. And that is that when we say... And that is that when we say, um, we talked about this at length at one of our meetings or I guess I was sitting in on your meeting, where we talked about, um... Okay, an attempt to permit children to enter school at the time most appropriate, kind of individually, the school committee establishes, um, I don't remember. Okay, second part of point number one, the admission of children whose birthdays fall after the first day of school will be solely at the superintendent's discretion.
Mm-hmm.
While we know that Superintendent Volensby has very detailed policies and procedures about how she would go through that evaluation process to come to a decision, it struck me that maybe we want for future superintendents and future reference, we might want to have something that explains a little bit further, an expectation that a procedure would be followed to look at test scores and evaluate the situation fully and not just make a...
A vibration through preschool.
Based on a parental request only. So I was gonna suggest that perhaps that sentence could be revised to say something like, "The admission of children to school after the first day of school will be solely at the superintendent's discretion, consistent with a set of procedures to determine readiness to enter kindergarten."
I would be fine with that.
Just to...
Yeah.
Make it clear there is a set of procedures that should be followed.
Consistent with a set of procedures.
To determine readiness to enter kindergarten. So I apologize for not bringing this up the first time.
No, that's okay. That's why we have one reading.
Yeah.
And I, I apologize, but I thought when we did the reading, and maybe it was because you were there Nancy, that we went through, you outlined some of the steps.
We did.
Right? And I, I apologize, I think I thought that they were included in another portion. Cause I agree, I mean, I think you're establishing the idea that there's a, a rule of law and not the rule of man or in this case, woman. Right?
So...
Because it also helps inform a parent so that they could make an initial assessment on their own, does my child seem to, you know, how will my child do by these criteria in making a decision to even ask for consideration if my child turns five on October first? I could say, oh, well, here are the things that they use and here's what my child has. Almost gives them, they could do some of the preparation work too, if it, if it requires turning in an assessment from a preschool or something like that. So I would move that we amend, um, section one of J E B to include the phrase, uh, sorry, I'm gonna take this out, to include the phrase, "At the superintendent's discretion, consistent with a set of procedures to determine readiness to enter kindergarten." Did I get it right? Oh.
Yes.
Consistent with a set of procedures to determine readiness to enter kindergarten. Yep. That, I would propose that we make that amendment to section one of Policy J E B. I switched, sorry, here, I'll go back. I'm reading it the right way. Right? Yeah, J E B entrance age.
Second. There's a motion that's been seconded to amend the entrance age policy, second part of part one to say, "The admission of children whose birthdays fall after the first day of school will be solely at the superintendent's discretion, consistent with a set of procedures to determine readiness to enter kindergarten." It's been seconded. All those in favor?
So before, uh, sorry, right, cause we have discussion afterwards.
Okay.
My only question is doing a, do we have to go back to making this a first reading? Because it's a revised policy and I forget about my Roberts Rules of Order.
We don't.
We don't?
I did look into that.
Okay.
As long as the Policy Subcommittee is in agreement that it doesn't need to go back to them, that they're agreeing.
I'm in favor of that. That was, my only question was a matter of procedure, which sort of goes to what this is about. So if, if we're right on the procedure, that's great.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, so now, I assume Marissa will proceed with the second reading with this, the amended version.
Oh, okay. Great. Do you mind if I, all right. So our new policy second reading of entrance age, "In an attempt to permit children to enter school at the time most appropriate for them individually, the school committee establishes the following policy on entrance age. One, children who will be five years of age prior to the first day of the school year during which they wish to enroll will be eligible to enter kindergarten for that school year. The admission of children whose birthdays fall after the first day of school will be solely at the superintendent's discretion, consistent with a set of procedures to determine readiness to enter kindergarten. Two, initial admission of children to the first grade or other grades will involve the consideration of both chronological age and the readiness of the children to do the work of those grades."
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion for a first reading and it's been seconded, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Wasn't that the second reading?
Second.
It was the second reading.
Did I say second reading?
You said first, so that was the second reading.
First and second reading, second reading. Motion passes. All right, I'm sorry for all the confusion. Thank you, everyone. Okay, and now Marissa's the next policy.
And so, second reading of the organization of instruction policy. The district offers a diversified educational program compatible with the needs of community and state standards. The organizational plan is designed to facilitate the philosophy of educating every student each to his or her fullest potential. The currently approved organization of instruction provides for the schools to be organized on the basis of grades K through four, five through eight, and nine through twelve. Certain exceptions to this general rule may be made with the approval of the school committee. The primary, elementary, middle level includes schools of pre-K, kindergarten through grade eight. The secondary level consists of schools of grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Special education services are integrated across each grade level in all schools. The organization is designed to meet the standards established within the curriculum frameworks as required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, time and learning regulations, and to serve the needs of all students.
Second.
I don't think we heard a motion to approve, did we?
Oh, sorry, a motion to approve, sorry.
Okay. Okay, Peter's made a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve the second reading of Policy I E, Organization of Instruction.
Second. Okay, and Cynthia has seconded it? Seconded that?
Motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Collaborative for Educational Services update, Cynthia.
Uh, the next meeting will be a week from tomorrow, so you know, be in North Hampton at all to meets every, every other meeting. Sometimes we need Greve Fields, this will be in North Hampton.
Cool, okay. Okay. Marissa, do you have an education policy update for us?
I do. So this week, I'd like to discuss a policy issue coming from the federal level with the release of the proposed federal budget, budget season, as we know. Probably everyone in this room is aware that the proposed federal budget includes across-the-board cuts for domestic programming and the federal Department of Education budget and its proposal is cut by fourteen percent, down from nine billion dollars from the two thousand seventeen budget. And so when you break that down, the proposed Department of Ed budget reflects the support for the school choice programs that we've heard the Secretary of Education, Betty DeVos, champion. While the total budget is cut by nine billion, as I said, the amount of spending on private and public school choice programs is increased by one point four billion and that includes a hundred sixty-eight million dollar boost for charter schools and a two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty million dollar allocation for a new school choice program which is specifically targeting private schools with public money. There's not really any details about what that program would look like, but it is specifically channeling money to private schools. And within the budget cuts, there also is elimination of any federal funding for before and after-school programs, summer programs, and teacher development. So, um, as far as how this will affect Massachusetts specifically beyond our sort of ethic of the whole nation, we know that currently a quarter of our state funding comes from the federal government or eleven billion of our forty-four billion dollar budget. So federal cuts to domestic programs are going to affect the state's budget across the board, even if they're not specifically targeted at education, particularly given the, given the simultaneous push to repeal the Affordable Care Act, which would result in nearly a trillion dollars in cuts to Medicaid across the coming decade. So as I mentioned at a previous meeting, the Massachusetts State Reps that I have heard talk about this issue have really said that those healthcare costs and those cuts are the biggest threat to the state budget and that education funding will be penalized as the state has to allocate money to health issues. So finally, I wanted to read a statement from the Executive Director of the National School Board Association who said that the administration's proposed nine billion dollar cut to the education budget is irresponsible and will put programs and needed support services provided by schools at risk if it is adopted by Congress. The proposal redirects hundreds of millions of dollars from public schools, often school districts that rely most heavily on federal aid, forcing them to cut vital services or raise local property taxes. So again, well, you know, it's such good news to see our, our healthy local budget. If forecast is bleak, if we're seeing such cuts at the federal level.
So our last easy budget here.
I realize that these education policy updates are just really depressing.
Pretty grim, pretty grim.
One of these weeks, I'm gonna have to come up with something uplifting to tell you all.
Well, I have to wait for it to happen.
But thank you for keeping us up to date.
Don Gummison was in our library today.
What's that?
Don Gummison was in our library talking to, talking to people today. And he's, other representatives as well, like from both the state and the federal are having their office hours this, in the next couple of weeks, so you can watch them. You know, go for it.
I also want to mention that next Tuesday, Glenn Kuchar, who is the Executive Director of the Mass Association of School Committees, is going to be coming to meet with us at six P M upstairs in our conference room and everyone is welcome. And I'm really looking forward to that session because he's such a knowledgeable individual and I find him fascinating to listen to and I, I know you all will as well, I'm sure you did when you probably met him at your original training for school committee training. But he's just, he's got so, he's a wealth of knowledge and, and I think it'd be great. He, he's coming particularly to brainstorm with us on what we can do as a committee and how we can affect change throughout the state, what we can do, I mean, obviously the biggest issue is working with our legislators and, and staying close with them, but we're gonna try to brainstorm what else we can do to try to affect positive change as a group, what we can do. I mean, we have to try something.
Yeah.
So I think it'll be a, an exciting conversation and I'm looking forward to that and I'm looking forward to brainstorming with all of you and with him and I'm looking forward to what comes out of that and what action we can take to try to affect some kind of positive change.
And I've heard people, you know, some, one mother in particular today was like really looking where she can put her energy there from a, from this kind of standpoint, how she, how she can affect change and that would be really great.
Great, yeah, like be thrilled to work with the broader community, not just our own group.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that the district does such a good job as those stewards of public funds at this local level of managing the money that we have in these really patient and careful ways. But then there, it's, it's in like maybe as a body that can also do that stewardship work of holding people above us accountable.
I also think it's a, it's a, it's an educational process and I'm mindful of, of observations that many of you shared about in a time of those sort of heated politics and I'm wanting to alienate people who you politically disagree with, but I, I think your presentation just reminded me again of how often I think people who supported the current administration politically may not have anticipated some of the consequences of the budget promises that have been made. You know, to, to take off, you know, my, my private personal hat, I think if you were to ask people in this community whether they would support increasing property taxes so that more people could attend Williston, that there would have been a pretty emphatic and clear answer to that.
Right.
And yet that's the policy proposal of the present administration, the present budget. So those of, in the community who supported and whose support is vital to the political future of the present administration, you might also, cause I'm not in that camp, right? I'm in the other camp. I was opposed to the policies of this administration for this kind of reason, you would probably have more power as someone who voted for, if you picked up the phone and said, wait a second, this isn't what I voted for, this isn't what I thought I was voting for. And, and so I would urge folks, first of all, verify that what I'm suggesting is accurate. I think it is. I think that's what this policy, this proposed federal budget would do, is require communities like East Hampton to make up for money that would be flowing to private schools.
Right.
That wasn't flowing to them under the prior administration and that that's, if you think that's a good idea, then, then you made the right vote. But it, but if you don't, then pick up the phone and call folks and say, that's not what I thought would make America great again.
Right.
And, and, and let them know that your vote for their reelection is contingent on changing that policy.
Yeah, and just because you've cut the, cut the budget at the federal level, that doesn't mean that the costs go away, it just means that someone else, that they get paid for somewhere else. Like we either are cutting services that students absolutely need and the community needs or we have to raise taxes locally to get those.
Right. And I think the whole, you know, the idea too is like, we'll put it back into the states, let the states decide, but if you say, let the states decide and there's no money. Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, this is accompanied by tax breaks for middle class and low income people.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, we look forward to meeting with Glenn Kuchar next week.
Yeah.
And also learning what we can too from our meeting tonight with Michael Moriarty to just enhance our knowledge of how our state government works.
And is he coming down here?
He is.
At six thirty, right?
Yes, I sent him an email when I learned that the room changed, I sent him an email. I don't know if he will have read it or not, but I'm hoping that with the sign on the door, we'd be able to catch him, okay?
And I think it's also important to note that like as a group, we're taking a proactive approach.
Right.
You know, we're, we're really trying to figure out what it is that we can do.
And I think that's why he wants to come meet with us, because he's happy to capitalize on the energy and that enthusiasm to affect change and he wants to help us, um, yeah, do something positive. Yeah. Okay, very good. And now, um...
Can I add something to the other section?
Let, okay, one, one minute, can we hop to Tess? I'd like to turn it over to Tess for a minute for the student activities update. Tess, do you have anything to share with us?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Well, tonight, uh, it already started, but there's a college planning night that's happening for families of junior and seniors to, so they can come and understand a plan for their paying for college and, and applying for college, because it's a very complicated process that I'd prefer, so I would love other families to go and learn about that process as well. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, East Hampton Drama Club is doing a performance of Candidate with you. That is the reason I was late, I was nervous, so I had to run here very quickly. It is a very good show. It will be seven P M on Thursday and Friday and two o'clock on Saturday. Tickets are eight dollars for adults and five dollars for seniors and students. The Royal Language Club is also hosting a winner or breakfast for dinner fundraiser on March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. It's gonna have pancakes, coffee, juice, and that will be in five thirty to seven thirty for, and ten dollars for adults and eight dollars for those six and under. And, uh, what else? Oh, uh, April seventh, I believe, is Mr. East Hampton, which is one of the biggest fundraisers of the year for East Hampton High School and that will have, I believe, twelve junior and senior boys having their month meal pageant, which is gonna be a great show. I believe twelve dollars, twelve, tickets are twelve dollars and they sell out really fast, they are available, so I'll get them really soon if you're planning on attending. And...
They're available now, Tess, and tickets?
They are available now, I think, um, I'm not sure if they are in the office, like the high school office yet, but I do know the contestants have tickets, so if you want to contact them any way possible, definitely do that as soon as you can, because it is a great show. It is super hilarious and one of the best fundraisers of the year, so yes, definitely.
Sell out right away.
Yeah. Yep.
A lot of disappointed people if you don't act immediately. Thank you very much. And I just want to mention again, one of the stars of the play is Ms. Tess McCallum herself and we're excited to see that, that'd be awesome, it should be great.
Oh, no, it's already, but...
And Tess and my daughter Kitty are the choreographers of the opening number for Mr. East Hampton. So they've been working with the guys for a while, right? It's gonna be a good show.
And I know I brought this up before, but April seventh is always the same exact date as Riverside Auction, which is another hugely attended thing. I know for Mr. East Hampton, it doesn't matter because they sell out anyway, but it matters for people like me that cannot go to bulk.
Oh, right, right.
Those are, you just can't go to bulk of those and so one of these years, maybe it wouldn't have been the same night, there was always the first Friday in April, which is a great event.
Yeah.
So these years, it'd be great.
I'll definitely bring it up, yeah.
Before we capture.
Yes.
That would be good to bring it up to Ms. Dunn and see if she can think about that for next year.
Cause I know you start scheduling already, you know, as soon as it's not even over and you're already starting to plan this year, so.
So I'll definitely bring it up for two seconds.
So I'll definitely bring it up to her, so, try to think. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Tess. Thank you. Okay, Sarah, you have something on your other for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to, so today I went and had lunch with the, uh, high school G S A at, um, at the high school, I guess, that would be what it's called. Um, and I, you know, I'm not, I, I have a lot of notes. I'm gonna put it together into something that we can kind of report out in, in a working session, um, at some point. Um, there were a lot of really great ideas and a lot of really good feedback, and it was really great to meet everybody, um, and I just wanted to say like, that was a really positive thing. I really appreciate them, um, giving up their lunch period and letting me come in and chat with them, and it was really cool.
When you say G S A, Gay Straight Alliance?
Gay Straight Alliance, yeah.
So you met with the club itself?
Yeah, yeah, and actually, like, you guys were all there, right? Like, it was pretty much the whole.
Yeah, the whole club was there, um, and correction to not be rude or anything, it's Gender Sexuality Alliance.
Oh, Gender Sexuality Alliance, I'm sorry.
So we're not limiting anyone who feels like they can be involved. Um, yes, it was very well attended. Everyone was there.
Yeah.
Discuss a lot of different companies, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, no, I, I wanna like, I just wanna take some time to like, kind of, because I, my whole plan was to like, kind of type everything up and have kind of a coherent thing to say, and then I, um, the rest of the day happened, so. Um, but I just wanted to say like, thank you to them for letting me sit in on, on their meeting and, um, inviting me, and it was really great, so. And the pizza was good, too, so.
That's what was being delivered as I was leaving. I had the, I had the pleasure of being at the high school today, too, and, and can update that part of the, um, curriculum approval that we, uh, announced, we okayed the high school coursebook, will have promising effect a year from now. I think we can look forward to celebrating some outstanding academic accomplishments coming out of high school. I won't say anything more because I don't want to jinx them, but there's some really impressive stuff in the pipeline in the history department.
Excellent, awesome. Okay, well, staying on task, um, moving on in our agenda, the next, uh, segment, Superintendent's Report, well, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you. So, um, when I understood, um, the, all the commitments for this evening, um, I, uh, suggested that, uh, Mr. Benoit, um, appear in front of the school committee at the next meeting. He had prepared quite a lengthy presentation, and I was, uh, afraid that we wouldn't have time for it this evening, so he will, uh, be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Sounds good, sounds great.
Very good. So, we'll move to warrants and payroll.
Okay, I move that we approve the school payroll dated the sixteenth of March, twenty seventeen, in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and five dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second. This motion has been seconded to approve the school payroll dated three sixteen, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and five dollars and fifty-three cents. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for the, uh, sorry, for payment dated the sixteenth of March, twenty seventeen, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second. There's been a motion has been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated March sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And we need signatures on those, so once you get the signed, you can. And again, just for the benefit of the public, knowing that people, um, two members of the committee, one member of the finance committee and one member of the, uh, policy committee have read through those budget, um, items in advance of tonight's meeting and asked clarifying questions. Uh, there's new, and now I'm going to, can you help me, Maria's new colleague in the office, Kathy?
Kathy Smith.
Kathy Smith, who does a terrific job, um, answering, answering the questions. Just know that Maria's psyched to have her working with her.
She's been a tremendous help to Maria. She's been trying to do the whole job herself, both jobs.
Okay, um, approving the minutes from the February twenty-eighth meeting.
Right, motion to approve the, um, minutes of the February twenty-eighth, uh, school committee meeting.
Uh, second.
There's been a motion to approve.
I'm gonna give it to me.
No, I was just checking to see if there were any, um, qualifications that, no, it's straight up, so that's fine, thank you for the second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from the thirty twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen meeting. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Yeah, add the field trip request from Maple School of Connecticut.
Motion to approve the field trip request, sorry, um, for Maple School's trip to get the, um, science curriculum, right, to the.
Connecticut Science Center.
Connecticut Science Center.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve the out-of-field, out-of-state field trip request from Maple School to go to Connecticut Science Center. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Now, I actually have a question on the next one, but I'll make the motion to start the conversation, so a motion to approve the, this is a trip for next April, no?
No, the following April.
Two years from now.
Two years, yes.
And, and Mike, okay, so motion to approve the, um, program for two years from now, April eleventh through April twenty-first of twenty nineteen, um, to Guatemala and Belize.
Second.
So here's, here's my question. We've had this conversation before, and this is where not having Mr. Benoit's presentation tonight, because I've always been concerned that we make sure that the two programs work com- as complements and not in competition with each other, and that they don't involve, um, I guess I would say this, too large a disruption in having to have a substitute teach for the regular teacher who would normally be in class, and since I don't know what the calendar is in that April, but looking at the total number of days, it's hard for me to imagine that that doesn't go into a second week. I think if you go, right, if you go weekend to weekend, you'd have nine days. This looks like it could be, right, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one is eleven days. So my concern about this is that it, that it might mean as many as two days where the students who don't go on this trip, and I, and I just.
Patriot's Day is the fifteenth, two days.
Right, and that was my initial look at it, was that it would involve two days. So I've, I've had that concern in the past. It's not necessarily an absolute roadblock. I just want to be alert to the desires of the, of the, the students and the families who say, we're here, we're in school, right on schedule where we're supposed to be, and we have a substitute here for something that the school committee essentially is endorsing for those who can afford to go on a trip. And I, I've always been concerned about that, so I just wanted to share. That is my hesitation, why I would tonight, at the very least abstain, but it seems like this is way early to be having to decide it tonight, but maybe there's some information that requires that we approve it now so that she can get it going.
I said that planning ahead allows more time to pl- to pay, making it more affordable for a large number of students, and there's also early discounts versus this approach. There's discounts for.
But maybe, maybe they're having these amount of days, maybe it's a little bit flexible, so if they leave on a certain day, it's cheaper than if they leave.
Right, and I guess, I, so I would just love to have a little bit more certainty about that. I mean, I, I understood that, you know, obviously, if you're making a trip, having two years to plan it is better. I get that, and I understand that's more time to raise money and how it might, but I would still.
Would you like to have Ms. Mango come in and speak to the committee?
Even if you can just confirm how much, how much regular class time. Is it gonna be a day like Monday, June twenty-sixth, where having her out is going to be a minimal loss to the students who don't go on the trip? Or is it gonna be two key days where, and, and just how do we address that? Right, because it just seems to me that for the kids who can't afford to go on a trip.
Right.
That's one thing. They can't go on the trip, but then to also be. Right?
That's just, that way you can get all your questions answered, and instead of going over what it might be and what it is, just have the two of them come together. I'm sure they'd be thrilled to come in.
So that, that's what I would ask the committee to do, if you could do that.
So you'd like to postpone the vote?
Right, I'd like to leave the discussion open and postpone the vote until after we've had them come. Can we do that?
Yes.
I mean, I'd be interested in, you know, hearing what they say, but my guess is, um, just knowing how most teachers plan for trips, um, most teachers figure out something that is going to be, um, the least interfering in the schedule and plan a lesson that can be, um, either a lesson or an activity that can be done without, you know, the actual teacher there. So, I mean, from my perspective, I would feel pretty comfortable and trust that, um, the teacher has done some effective planning for that.
I would, I would tend to agree, and I tend to think, like, absences happen a lot throughout the year, and I would hate to see a trip like that not be able to happen for that reason, because I do think it happens all the time.
Happen for different reasons, right, and unanticipated illness or something that happens to that is different, I hope you would agree, than us endorsing a trip where the students who have access to the teacher are those who can pay some portion of a thirty-two hundred dollar bill.
Again, I think that's part of it, too, why, uh, two years is, they've explained, um, repeatedly how they do fundraisers, it makes it more affordable, it's getting better rates. I'm, I'm, um, prepared to vote if, if anybody wants to put it to a vote. I'm prepared to vote on, uh, it's been, the motions were made and seconded for the out-of-state field trip from February eleventh nineteen to, uh, April twenty-one of nineteen, excuse me, April, uh, from Guatemala and Belize. How to entertain a motion?
Um, can I just, you were talking about, um, absences being different from planned. Um, it's harder to plan effectively for being sick. So to me, we lose out more when a teacher doesn't know they're gonna be out versus someone who knows it like now, that they're gonna be out on a given day. They're gonna have a much more effective plan, um, something, you know.
Yeah, I have no doubt about the effectiveness of the plan, and I think I, it may just be a philosophical difference. I, I think I'm speaking on behalf of those who either prefer to have class, right, you know, or who can, either folks who are unable or unwilling, and I know we've talked about this in the past, and, and I respect the mayor's position on this. I think we just, uh, have to agree to disagree, that inevitably, when the students who can afford to go on a trip have access to the teacher, and those who either are unable or unwilling to go can't buy our vote, not by an illness, not by a professional development conference, or something else that affects all students, right? When, when a teacher's out sick, all the students in the class are affected equally by that absence. In this case, we're endorsing something that has a differential impact. Some, the kids on that side of the room who don't go on the trip, you're gonna be affected differently than the kids on this side who go on the trip. Philosophically, I have a harder time with that. Because if you're out sick, everybody's affected.
But the ones that are go- Exactly. We, we know what your point is, Peter, and I think it's well taken, and, um, but at the same point in time, the students that, um, the students that do go on the trip are missing classes in, in, you know, other of their classes that aren't there that day, like, they're not there for the planned programming. So we're spoke way, but I, I, I think we all understand what you're coming from is what could be a hardship on not being able to attend.
Right.
You know, a financial hardship.
Right, and that's why I would love to have her here to ask and to, to, to make the case rather than us assuming that this is the only way to save two hundred, four hundred, six hundred dollars, right? If it's just, well, we think it would be a nicer trip to do it this way, but we could actually do it and leave, you know, one day later and return one day earlier, and therefore not differentially impact the students who are staying. I, I would just like her to say that.
No law, no law that classes.
Right.
You're looking at the lost days of.
Right.
Two, two days.
Right, I'll tell you what, let's take a vote, let's take a vote on this, this evening with the idea that we'll still have, um, Ms. Mango, come and speak with us. Let's take a vote right now. Okay, uh, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, there's a motion that's been seconded.
Okay, and it's been seconded, okay. All those in favor of voting to approve the trip as proposed? Okay, all one abstention.
And it might be helpful if they become the, the same night, because I know part of the thing, too, was some of the questions before were coordinating the trips, so that you don't actually have conferring trips against each other, too. So it would really probably be helpful.
But I don't think it, I don't think it's necessary now to have her come. What's the point of having her come?
Well.
You guys just devoted to endorse the trip. Why would we have her come to answer questions about a vote? We've already just said yes.
Well, then why are you having, um, Mr. Benoit come?
Yeah, it would just be informational, and you could ask the kinds of questions you want to ask and have the conversations.
Same, same reason.
We're not going to prevent it from happening, but we could have the information.
Right, he's making a report on something that's happened.
No, it's gonna, it's something future.
Right.
Future oriented.
He wants you to approve.
Oh, is that, and that wasn't? Right, did I miss that?
We didn't put any in here because I had taken it all.
Oh, okay, that's my confusion. There's no proposal in here relative to his, I thought he was coming informationally.
He was, he was.
Right, but I didn't understand that there was going to be an action item related to it, because it's not in the packet, correct?
And there may not be at our next meeting either.
Okay, so I would go back to making, I would make the, the same, same distinction, that, that we wouldn't vote on, I'm answering the mayor's question here. The reason that I would suggest that we don't need to invite her is that there's no pending question which her information will impact. Unless her, what she shares is gonna impact our vote on, on Mr. Benoit's program, there, it doesn't seem to me that there's a point in having her come.
Okay, scratch that. She doesn't have to come. All right.
None of them.
Okay, uh, we have one last matter for action. School choice opening request, East Hampton High School, grade ten. Do we have a motion? We assume that, uh, we didn't have anyone on the waiting list for grade ten?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the tenth grade school choice slot for, uh, a student who is relocated to Holyoke. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, we need a motion to, um, move into a work session.
Motion to move into a work session.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much, and we welcome Mr. Michael Moriarty.
Hello, how you doing?
Well, where are those ways for them to be on video, maybe, maybe wanna change seats with them?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mayor Karen, I'm sorry. I was thinking, should I continue to record the work session? Doesn't matter. I was just stopping it for a moment.
Then, sit anywhere you want.
Okay, great.
It's still going.
It's still going. It doesn't work.
Press hard. It'll turn green.